Testing 1, 2, 3. This will be the July 23rd, 2014 Special Budget Council Meeting.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order a special meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, July 23rd, 2014, approximately 7:00 PM. At this time, we'll move to Agenda Item Number 2, Discuss/ Take Action on Presentation of the FY 14-15 Budget.
Thank you, Mayor. We prepared somewhat of a long presentation again for you this year to present the proposed budget. The theme of the budget this year is "On the Path to a Better Tomorrow," largely because this budget contains not a lot of new things. We're just kind of holding down the fort until we get to a better tomorrow. We did receive the 13-14 GFOA Distinguished Budget Award. We followed those same guidelines in the preparation of this budget. We did add a section on departmental goals, objectives for this next year. That was actually a request from the reviewers of the last year's budget award, so we did include that. That's a new section of the budget. Otherwise, everything's very similar to last year. This is the budget process and the charter, and this requires that I submit a budget to you no later than your first meeting in August, which includes an outline of financial policies, a complete financial plan for the next year, detailed estimate of revenues, detailed description of proposed expenditures, and a capital program. This is your budget calendar. We are at the July 23rd marker there. The next step would be the August 20th meeting, in which you're going to approve the resolution for the 2014-15 stormwater assessment. Then you will have two public hearings, one September 3rd and one September 17th, and one of your action items tonight is to set those two public hearings. The budget environment in which we developed this budget includes a 6.5% increase in property valuations. It also includes a 15.52% increase in property valuations within the Community Redevelopment Agency area. It includes more accurate revenue projections resulting in revenue reductions in general fund, and I'll explain that in a moment. It includes an elimination from Bavard County's First Responder Program, and this includes an increase in health insurance premiums. I'm sure you've been reading it about health insurance costs in the newspaper recently. So, we did experience an increase in budgeted ad valorem, and this is the 6.58% increase in taxable value. That included a $342,177 increase in revenues with the current millage rate. However, $100,000 of that goes directly into the CRA, and then $55,000 is the proposed insurance increase that we budgeted. The elimination of the First Responder Program took out $45,000 out of that. The reduction of ad valorem budget projections for fiscal year 13-14, we decreased the budget by $75,000 in revenues, largely that delinquent taxes line item in your budget for ad valorem. We realized that what was happening, and it took, you know, Andy and I a while to figure out what the revenues were since we got here, and we explained this at mid-year, is basically when you budget your ad valorem, you take out, you apply your millage rate and either multiply it by .97, which is what we do, 97%, and you assume 97% of the, you're going to get 97% of that budgeted ad valorem. But then, for some reason, it also included an additional $75,000 in delinquent taxes, and we weren't collecting that. So every year, the city would have to amend that budget. So this time, we just took that out, so we don't have to amend the budget later to take it out. We also had a reduction in recreation program revenues. We had, we lost two programs, instructors, that went on to create their own businesses, which is very exciting for them, but it was a loss for us. So, we had one very popular, two very popular program instructors that went on to create their own businesses, so we lost that program within our recreation department. So we are estimating a decline of $41,000 in revenues for the next year.
For those programs?
That was the karate, Little Karate, and Zumba. So, when those instructors are very popular, when they start their own business, a lot of, all the people go with them, you know? So, it's very exciting for them, we're happy for them, and it's good that we create that environment where we kind of create a stepping stone for people to go on to make their own businesses. But unfortunately, we have to restart that program over within our recreation department. Next slide. Healthcare costs, of course, is all we think about right now. We all expected a pretty big increase this year from the Affordable Care Act, so everyone who was paying attention knew that we were going to get a pretty big increase in healthcare costs. We were expecting around an eight-ish percent. We got a 10 and 1/2% increase. That would represent $100,000 over our fiscal year 13-14 budget. What we did was, we budgeted a 5% increase. We will have to meet that. This is what we did last year. We created a budget that we were going to meet that goal, so we will either meet that with negotiations on the cost with Cigna, or we will go out to bid, or we will do some plan adjustments to meet that 5%. City staff continues to explore employee health clinic options and costs associated with clinics. We've had one meeting with our consultant in neighboring jurisdiction regarding that concept. We are in discussions with both the county and the school board staff on that option, and we are actually starting to schedule a meeting to talk about a specific model that worked and to see if we can apply that same model county-wide. Final health insurance quotes will be presented in the September public hearing, so by then we will know. We will have our renewal letters finalized, and we will meet that 5% and move on. If we can get it less, we will be happy about that, but I highly doubt that'll happen. We are budgeting the proposed budget. We're presenting that to you with the current millage rate of 8.3206. So that current, we're recommending to stay at the current millage rate. It did provide us with a $342,147 in additional ad valorem revenue. We explained that, I just explained where that is going, so we are not requesting a millage increase for next year. This is my house. This is what we showed you last year and how much, an example of what our community would pay in taxes. So this would represent, the new millage, or the millage rate with the new property values, would represent a $13.98, or $98 increase for the year for me, so that would equal $1.16 a month in which I will be paying more taxes this coming year. Okay?
Excuse me, please. We will have to open up for public comment. At this time, please let the presenter finish.
This is the distribution of taxes. This is, I think, a pretty telling slide where, you know, your City of Satellite Beach taxes account for approximately 32% of your total tax bill, so where you see most of your taxes are going to your county millage and your school taxes. So your school, actually, the school board taxes account for the largest taxable, tax section of your tax bill. And this is our general fund expenditures by department, and again, you know, this is very typical, it's a typical distribution, it hasn't changed very much. Public safety, just like in every other city, that has police and fire, expenditures accounts for approximately half of our budget. The rest goes to, you know, our other legislative and supportive departments and public works, as well as general government services, which is kind of paying, like paying the electric bill and the light bill and so on. This is expenditures by department. General government services experienced a decrease, and our police and fire, building and zoning presented an increase. Most departments show a slight increase largely because your healthcare increases, but police and fire shows such a large increase largely because last year we used some of the advanced employer contribution to balance the budget for their pension, so now that full pension cost is shown in the budget again. So, they're really not, we didn't really increase their budget, really. We're just using a different funding source, which is general fund. This is your reserve projection for this coming budget year. We're projecting that you'll end this year with $802,078 in unrestricted reserves, which would include your stabilization reserve, as well as your unassigned fund balance. Again, you recall you created a stabilization reserve to use for emergencies only, and if you needed to use that for something else, then you would have to change your ordinance, and it kind of makes you think about, you know, taking some steps to use those funds. And then you still, but you still have an unrestricted reserve balance of $275,000. By the end of next year, we're proposing, or we're estimating, unrestricted fund balance of $975,273. So that's a pretty good increase, you know, since I started with you. When we started, it was $35,000. This is your stormwater fund. We're proposing an increase from a $65 equivalent residential unit to $85 per equivalent residential unit. You had that workshop, we took your direction, and we balanced the budget with that $85 per ERU. This increase will cover costs of maintenance and debt service only. You are going to approve that rate, or will be presented to you for approval on August 20th, 2014, by resolution. Your community redevelopment agency and other funds, your community redevelopment agency, we continue to fund the debt service for past redevelopment projects. We continue to provide the general fund reimbursement for administrative costs of operating the CRA, and then we continue the tax increment financing refund agreement with Bavard County. We also provide new funding for A1A construction and engineering, and then beach access improvements, particularly Shell Street, so that project will occur coming up shortly. The proposed budget for the CRA is $2.1 million. Or is that for our fund?
That's the CRA.
That's the CRA. The capital asset expenditures focus on maintenance of existing facilities and capital fund debt service payments. So primarily, for our debt service payments, we're talking about our RMS system, the pumper truck, and then we also have a lease for a Dodge Charger that we're still paying. And then, in our terms of our maintenance and capital, we have funded for AC replacements. The DRS Center will get new dance floor replacements. We will be funding one admin vehicle for police and one patrol vehicle. We are funding police and fire radios and for public works equipment, which will get a stand probe for the field's maintenance. So the budget highlights, we are providing a more accurate revenue projection to avoid substantial mid-year budget amendments, which is what we've done, and we had to do last this past year, so hopefully we'll avoid that coming up. And we will be continuing to hold line on department expenses, but departments have done an exceptional job in controlling their costs. All of them have come up with new ways of doing things cheaper, and they've done a really good job of making sure that they don't go over budget and, or have been participating in the budget process pretty closely. We all continue to fund employee benefits at acceptable levels. We provide funding for stormwater maintenance. We provide maintenance and capital assets for the existing facilities that we have, and we increase our general fund reserves, and we maintain our existing millage rate of 8.3206. I would like to talk to you a little bit about our millage rate and some of the impacts that our millage rate has. And this is our community redevelopment agency. I would like to show you what, because I hear a lot about how high our millage rate is, and I hear a lot about, you know, we have bloated services and we have, you know, maybe we need to cut and this and that, and I want to show you how, that, I don't think that's true. A lot of the reasons why our millage rate is so high is from the CRA. This is an example of City of Melbourne, and I'm showing you that they have an ad valorem, their ad valorem that they generate is $25.9 million a year, okay? They have three CRAs there. One was created in 1982, which was their downtown Melbourne CRA. They created their Babcock CRA, I think in like '97, and then they created the O'Gally CRA in, I think, 2000. The combined cost of those CRAs is $1.1 million. The percentage of that CRA contribution for their annual ad valorem is 4.2%. Now, we always, in order to compare services, you know, I looked at public safety, because for most cities that provide both police and fire, it usually accounts for about half of their budget, so, and that's very similar to us. So, the public safety for the City of Melbourne is funded at 56.2%, which is actually higher than most. Their police level of service is 2.17 sworn officers per 1,000, and their fire level of service is four person minimum staffing. And the reason why I'm showing you that is to show you that we have very similar levels of service, and we have similar percentage of funding that we dedicate to public safety. So we don't really have, and here I'm going to show you another city. If you go to City of Titusville, they have an ad valorem generated at 9.5 million. Their city contribution to their CRA is $420,000 a year. Their CRA was created in 1982. The percentage of ad valorem that that CRA contribution is, is 4.3%. Their proposed millage rate is 7.3, and their public safety is funded at 45%, okay? Their level of service for police is 1.9 officers per 1,000 people, and their fire level of service is four person minimum staffing. And then you get to Satellite Beach. Our city, we have a $5.6 million ad valorem generation. Our city contribution to the CRA is $750,000 a year. That accounts for 13.42% of our ad valorem. So remember, the other two cities, it's around 4%, and we contribute 13.42%. Our proposed millage rate is 8.32. Our public safety is funded at 45%, almost 46, so that is very similar to Titusville and the City of Melbourne. We have two sworn officers per 1,000, and we have four person minimum staffing, very similar to other cities that provide that service. If we did not have a CRA payment, our millage rate would be 7.45, and that is backing out what the CRA pays for in terms of staffing. Okay? So I just wanted to show people that, that we don't have bloated services here in the city. We have very similar levels of service to other communities. We may provide different services, like some cities have water utilities, some cities have, you know, golf courses. We have a recreation department, that's something that we provide that's maybe a little bit different than other cities, but for the most part, we have very similar services. But our millage rate is higher because we do have a CRA that does take up quite a bit of our ad valorem revenue every year. I do want to go through your goals, because I like to show that you that we are working on all of your initiatives that you have for the year, and one of the initiatives that you had coming up, go ahead, is the Beachcaster, which we have completed. The recreation department, as well as the fire department and the city manager, we all have Facebook pages. We all kind of share. When, you know, recreation puts something up, I make sure I put it up, and fire does the same thing, so we all kind of get the word out together. Some of the, I do hear from people that they went to an event because they saw it on our Facebook pages, so they really liked that. So we have been very good at using our social media. We are still in the process of completing the redesign and user-friendliness of the city's website. We have done quite a bit of improvements to the website. We still have some work to do. We are conducting the quarterly town hall meetings, and then also, I think we've done a pretty good job of correcting false information. I think a lot of people appreciate the Beachcasters and the, you know, the rumor mill thing, and then, you know, sometimes I send out things through Facebook if I hear a rumor, so a lot of people like those corrections. The community redevelopment plan will be presented to the CRA on September 3rd. It'll go to the advisory board before that. So the advisory board, I think it's the 21st, or something, 21st of August, they'll receive that plan for their review, and then it'll be presented to the CRA on September 3rd for your review, or for the CRA's review, and then with any recommendations from the advisory board. We have been doing pretty good about keeping people informed about the CRA. We did include a nice article in the Beachcaster about our projects. I got a lot of phone calls after that article went out because they wanted to see the plan, so a lot of people were interested in seeing the final plans for the new projects that we were doing. We did obtain our SNAP certification. We've simplified board approval process for site plans. The options to resolve impediments to new businesses and provide these, you know, to basically options, provide the options to the business community, those are in process. We have some ideas regarding the facade grant for the community redevelopment agency, and we have some ideas for some code changes, and we'll be presenting those to you in the future. We are ongoing on a pursuit to develop the 100 acres. I think we talk about it all the time, and we're trying to do whatever we can do to get that going. I think the city's done a pretty good job in expanding and increasing awareness of CFAL, and Councilman Breimer has done a wonderful job in presenting to the League of Cities. We did get a lot of cities to pass the resolution, accepting and restarting the CFAL programs, but all of the departments have done a great job in getting those initiatives going. The health clinic, I kind of updated you on that already, and we are pursuing that as much as we can. And then city departments, or city volunteers, you'll see that some of the departments and their goals and objectives, I've actually made that a priority to start using the volunteers in the city and creating new opportunities for our volunteers. We actually have two volunteers in city hall right now, so we've been doing a pretty good job in using that, using our volunteers to our advantage. Staff goals for 2014, I think you'll really see these goals reflected in the budget, when you read the budget, is focused on facilities, maintenance, and upgrades, increasing training opportunities for staff, upgrading and integrating building, zoning, and code enforcement business tax receipt software, upgrading the city's technology, and digitizing city's public records. So we've actually, that's one of the things we're using our volunteers for, is, you know, the scanning and things like that, and then we also have an AARP employee that's in our city hall that doesn't, isn't a cost to us, that's helping us with some of those things. There's one thing that I do need your direction on. We did get the special magistrate process with the deans versus the city for the, and we did, we got that after we balanced this budget. So I need you, and this budget's pretty slim. We tried to keep with the current millage rate, and because the last special magistrate cost around $22,000, I need your direction on how you want to deal with it this time. So, options are reserves, decrease employee health benefits, eliminate funding for a position, eliminate the funding for the Beachcaster, and increase the millage rate. So, I really need to know how you all want to handle that. The staff recommendation would be to take it out of reserves. We do have, we did include last year $150,000 more than we had originally thought we were going to in terms of the reserves, so that would be our recommendation, but, you know, we're trying to build our reserves, so we wanted to get your direction on how you want to deal with that. And then also, after we talk about that, we will need you to set the tentative millage rate and set the two public hearings, and we have those listed up here.
Okay, thank you. Let's take Agenda Item 2 first, on the presentation of the budget questions to staff who turn in the budget from council.
I have some questions. There's a comptroller position online. I didn't see that position in this budget. Can you explain what that position was going to be, and why is it included, and where that came about, creating a position for the city?
Sure. We didn't create the position. It was actually, one of our accountants left the city to another position, and we, within that pay grade and within the same budget that we had for the accountant position, created a comptroller position, basically for a title, to get the former finance director from Melbourne Beach to come to our city.
Who, I'm sorry?
She's now an employee with the City of Satellite Beach.
Oh, okay.
Those are questions you have before.
Yeah, I have actually a lot of questions. On page nine, I find, are we getting into the budget or just the presentation?
Presentation now.
Okay.
I think, to be honest, we're going to sit two public hearings, the 3rd and the 17th, for the budget.
Okay, well, I do have, I just need to make some statements. On page nine, it talks about the income for Satellite Beach, and the median household income is $61,712, and the family income is $75,994. Forty percent of the households and 20% of the families make less than $50,000. It's a pretty shocking number, $50,000 for 40% of the households in Satellite Beach. And we heard about the old proverbial Big Mac and the increase in the stormwater utility fund, but it's not a lot of money to sustain a family and a household. So I just wanted to make people aware of what is really going on out there in the community. It's not really pleasant, and 40% of your households make less than 50 grand a year, and we have to increase fees, and that's why I didn't support those fees increases. There was a lot of discussion about the CRA and decreasing the boundaries of the CRA to bring more money back into the general fund. It's my understanding, because of the line of credit and the debt service, that the lender wouldn't allow that to happen, because it has been batted around. There's also been a lot of discussion about eliminating the CRA completely to bring more revenue back into the general fund so that the millage rate could go down for the people. Has there been any comparisons done regarding that?
Yeah, we're actually presenting a plan to the community redevelopment agency at the next meeting, on August, I think, 2nd meeting, August 6th, I'm sorry. Yes, August 6th. So that was at the last CRA meeting, the chairman had asked, had made the board aware that he wanted the CRA to look at that, so the board directed me to start looking into that, and so I was presenting a plan to the board. So we can, you don't really have to shut the CRA down, like, you know, obviously we have a debt service payment, or change the boundaries, you can just send the money back at the end of the year to the taxing authorities, and I'm sorry that your consultants and previous city manager didn't come up with that idea, but that's something that we can do.
Okay, and then it's, you know, there was a lot of discussion about completely shutting down the CRA, but it's my understanding that the city would have to assume the debt service, which is pretty extraordinary. You know, we, you know, I, and, I'm sorry.
I don't, I didn't, we, I wasn't given direction to shut the CRA down.
I'm just making a statement that there was a lot of discussion about shutting the CRA down at one point, completely, but because of the debt service, it couldn't, well, it could be done, but the city would have to assume the debt service and pay that debt service. So I just wanted to make that statement. So, I mean, I think a comparison should be done. This is what the CRA is now, this is what it is if we shut it down, and would it financially be better for it to be shut down and for the city to pay down the debt service? I personally never saw a need for a CRA in the city. We don't really have a blighted community that needed redevelopment, and all it's really done is taken away from the ad valorem revenue that's coming in for the city. So I just wanted to say that, since you brought it up. For a city that has no debt service, we have a lot of debt service. One of the things I did think about, and I know Alan desperately needs a place for that back truck, is, you know, 150 grand to build a structure, and it came to me today. Why not rent a place to put it nearby, I don't know, Bob's place or something, temporarily until, it's just a lot of money, 150 grand.
You want to direct to Alan, or would you like to answer?
Whichever you would like. I think 150,000 I put in, that was like a safe number. I think we can get, do our own building for about 75,000. Indian Harbor Beach has built their own, a metal structure for about, I think they did theirs for about 65,000, but we're looking at, you know, trying to do ours for about 75, so we can store some other equipment there. We're running out of room. But as far as renting something, we'd have to find something tall enough to, and close enough that it would make it, you know, feasible, you know? There's not a lot of tall buildings around that you can store equipment in. I haven't really looked into it, but I could look into it and see.
I'm just not saying long-term, you wouldn't want to secure it, but in the interim, because of the situation, where, you know, it could save the city a lot of money.
Well, the one idea that I did have was, we pay, we currently pay about $250 a month for a garage over here, a storage garage for some of our equipment. That $250 a month could be used to pay off a building of our own, so we could, you know, move that debt into our own building, so that is something we were looking at as well. But yeah, I'll look into a rental and see if there's something available.
I mean, when you're on the, if you can find something on the beachside, I mean, it's not far, nothing's far, you know?
Right, right, right. Well, there was a plan to work with Cocoa Beach, when Chuck Billious was the city manager up there, at the old base housing area, because they have a pump station, they were going to build a building, and we were going to rent some space from them for, and they were going to build it big enough- were going to build it big enough for a back truck, and we were going to share or rent some space from them, but that plan went away when Chuck Billious retired, so that's where we're at with that.
One other question, because I know last year everybody got a 3% COLA, if I remember it as a 3%, and then in the, the evaluation that was done, and there were several renditions, there were, you know, one that was presented, and there were some changes made by the staff, and it was my understanding that last year we were giving everybody a 3% COLA, and then the people at the lower echelon this year were going to get pay grade increases. That's not feasible this year, even keeping the millage?
Well, we would have to increase the millage rate to do that, because right now we had surprises with the first responder program, you know, reductions in revenues, and then, you know, the CRA is outpacing the increase of the, you know, of the citywide, so we just didn't have the money to provide that without increasing the millage rate.
So, in order to do that, we'd have to increase the millage rate? I noticed some of the departments, some of the salaries went up and some went down. Explanation for some, some of that, like some, for, for example, support services, the salaries went up 20 grand, page 41. Andy, do you have that?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and then in some cases, for example, building as well, there are some instances where employees were compensated for taking over a whole nother function, so.
I can hear you.
Some employees were compensated for taking over a whole nother function that was outside of their job description, so, for example, the building took over, or a building official took over the CRA, and then we had one instance where our HR director or coordinator took over the whole payroll system.
Well, I'm not seeing any increase in building. It's pretty much status quo, and I thought that was a memorandum of understanding to help support his salary.
No, he had a, he had a salary increase, but there was a memorandum of understanding for the CRA to pay a percentage of his, of his salary.
Okay.
To the general fund, to make up for the cost of his services to the CRA.
Again, like, in the police department, there's a $30,000 increase, but in building and zoning, no, actually a decrease in building and, of public works, an actual decrease in salary.
Yeah, public works, we're holding a position until we can figure out what we can do with
And I will wait until I hear other comments and go through, if I have any other additional questions, I'll let you know.
Okay, any other comments from council?
May I make a motion regarding where we're going to take the money from?
Okay, yes, let's start with that one.
Okay. I'm not willing to have, allow Ms. Deenan's recalcitrance impact the city employees or our residents, so that leaves us with the reserves. So I will move that the money for the city's legal expenses in Deenan versus the city be taken from the reserves.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Montanera. A whole discussion on this from council, then I'll open it up the floor for general council discussion.
I have, I would like to discuss it. I think that, number one, I went through a general process of the variance, and then eventually a code enforcement proceeding, that's cost of business for, for the city. You chose to hire, or whoever, the city manager chose to hire an outside attorney, and I don't know what the rate is, I didn't see the, any invoices, but that was not a decision that the city council made in, in general. So it's the cost of doing business by the city, I think it should have been part of the original budget, there was $71,000 in there for attorney fees, attorney fees. It's a really unusual circumstance, where you not only had attorney representing the city staff, but you had an attorney representing the board. That's not common, that's not usual. I was treated differently than most other folks that go through the process, so I don't support taking it out of the reserves. If there are adjustments need to be made in the budget to keep the millage rate the same, that's the way it should be done.
How, what adjustments did you want to do? How would you want to do that?
That's, that's not my job, that's not my job.
I'm asking is for your direction.
I just talked about, you know, maybe finding a rental place for the back truck.
Back truck isn't funded this year. The back truck building is not funded this year.
I thought it was in the CIP.
It's in the CIP for future years, not funded this year.
Well, I'm not going to get into an argument, the reality is, you always, the city always has a city attorney present at these proceedings.
The city attorney could not represent the city in these proceedings because he is your employee, and there was a conflict of interest, so we had to hire outside counsel for that.
Okay, well, I'm not going to get into an argument.
So when we did that, we came to you with a budget amendment at mid-year to increase the budget for legal services to pay for the, what we did last year, or this year. Next year, however, is different, because we were not expecting a $22,000 cost for legal expenses, we thought this process was over. So what I'm asking from council is, how do you want to, to deal with that? If you don't want to take it out of reserves, then I'm asking respectfully, how do you want to take it out, and I'm giving you four other options of how you want to deal with that.
It's the city manager's issue.
We do have a motion, but before we take a vote, I'd like to go back to the original, any other questions on, on the presentation of the budget? We're going to set two workshops for the budget itself, so any, any questions to staff or Courtney Hall?
Just one, I just want to apologize to council for being late tonight, I mean, it was something I just could not avoid, but just, please accept my apologies.
Is there any further?
I just want to say, I, I did have some questions. I sat down with Courtney, and we went over the issues that I had, and I just had some specific questions, and I think the budget itself is, as last year's, was done very well, and I want to thank staff for putting it together in a professional manner that they are usually doing to put these together, and I want to thank the department heads too, for their input on all of this, because this was a pretty good stretch for some of you as far as making the things work in your departments, that, you know, you've made work for the last year, and you're looking to make work for the next year also, with, you know, the limitations that we have going on. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any further discussion from council? At this time, I'm opening up for public comment on this item.
Good evening, council. Ron Jagudis, resident of the city of Satellite Beach and respective CRA. Now, since we have an amendment brought forward, or a vote for $22,000, do I get six minutes or three minutes?
You got your three minutes, sir.
And I just want for the record, to outline to the people who is behind me. Behind me are all city staff members, and I want to thank them for working on this budget. I see one board member, another former board member, or maybe a future board member, and two citizens, two citizens, only at this meeting. And this is a workshop. I wonder if, if I tweeted out there that we were having this meeting for the start of the budget process, and if it hasn't, it hasn't. And then I go to the CRA. But before I go to the CRA, respectfully, we have had $600,000 approximately increase in revenues over the last two years. And we have an agreement, in our local agreement, with the county and the city, we have an agreement with the city and the CRA, and the CRA ends up to be the whipping post one And I have a problem with that. And besides, $100,000 of the $300,000 increase this year in rates is being taken by the CRA, but nobody mentions that we have an agreement with the city and the CRA, and the county and the CRA, for those funds to come back. 80% goes to reserves, 20% goes to who knows where, and that's fine. We are in a unique situation here in Satellite Beach. Comparing Melbourne to Titusville and other municipalities is a broad stroke in its insult, insulting to the citizens of Satellite Beach. For one reason, that this place is unique, we have a beach, we have other areas here that need attention, and our CRA has been neglected. We may have parks up there, which is a very good thing the city did.
I'm sorry, could you please wrap up? Your time is up.
Thank you for informing me, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to conclude right now with one item. This is a conservation area, this is an area where people care about the ecological issues at hand. It's all touted here, but please take a look at page nine, at how children are not, it is wrong to have that picture there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Time's up, thank you.
And I am leaving this room.
Yes, you are, thank you. Public comment, excuse me, public comment is still open? Hearing none, bring it back to council. I'd like to say one thing, the process that is in place and has been for quite some time is that we have a workshop to set the tentative millage rate, and then we hold two public hearings by law, and we have to pick the two dates, the dates were September 3rd and 17th, that has been proposed, and we've done this every year, we do put out the information to the public, and generally at those meetings, we do have considerably more public, Adam. So, that. At this time, we have a motion on the floor to take the 22,000 from reserve. Do I have any further comment on that from council?
Yes, I have to comment. I think what has been done here is appalling. I wasn't at the last meeting, but it's my understanding that this issue was brought out under city manager's reports. I went through a process, I filed for a variance, et cetera, et cetera. I have seen no invoices to prove that $22,000 was spent on this issue, and I'm being used as a scapegoat to say that we have to take money out of the reserves. Very offensive. The reality is, regardless, you would have had an attorney there, and you chose to use X attorney, X rate, so if you take someone a citizen going through a process, which I am as well, and taking whatever you spent, you chose to spend. By the way, the code says that if, during a code enforcement procedure, the city attorney shall represent the code enforcement board, it's in our code, and if you want to change the attorney, it needs to come to city council, look it up, and the city council must approve the rate. That didn't happen either, so there's a lot of procedural issues here that I, I want to discuss. I'm not going to discuss it, but I'm just saying, to use me as a scapegoat, to increase, to take money out of reserves is absolutely ridiculous. I would like to see if Mr. Reedle spent those hours, which he would have done in any other citizen case, versus Mr. Langley's hours, what the difference would be, because you would have spent those, that money anyway, for any other citizen, but what you're doing is saying, because it's Councilwoman Deenan, let's take it out of reserves, and let's use it as a political whipping tool, which is exactly, is exactly what's going to be done. So that's the last statement I'm going to make. I find it appalling that twice, it could have been presented as legal fees have increased, just like you've done any other time, but you're putting my name as a citizen in here, and I find it absolutely appalling and disgusting, and that's all I'm going to say. And I won't support the increase, or taking the money out of reserves to pay for the legal fees, which the city chose to do on their own.
Thank you for your comments, other comments?
Yeah, I want to respond to that. Councilwoman Deenan, I hope that you will be at our workshop tomorrow evening when we talk about the handbook for the boards. You might learn something about Florida law and legal representation for code enforcement boards. In addition, you have taken this process farther, to greater extremes.
Can we stick to the subject, please? It's out of order, out of order.
I have the floor.
Out of order.
She has the floor, I'm accepting her.
Okay, well, then I'll make another, I'm going to make a statement.
You have carried this, as a private citizen, you have carried this issue farther, this code enforcement process farther than anybody else ever has, as far as I know, in the history of our code enforcement board. And there's a cost associated with that, and if you don't like your name attached to it, then maybe you shouldn't have initiated these actions. There are consequences to behavior.
Well, I would like to.
You don't have the floor yet.
Okay.
Okay, I will, more than happy to let you have it. Is that, any further, any further council comment on that? I'm going to make a comment on it, though. We have to balance this budget, and when we have hidden costs come up after the fact that the budget was balanced, we need to get the money from somewhere to balance the legal cost. In your case, you, you are a dual holder here, you're not just a citizen. When you got elected to this council, it changed that. You are a member of this council, and Jim is our employee, our employee. So, direction from him and staff was, we went out and got another attorney to defend the city's portion here, whether it was your name or anybody else's name. We have to balance this budget, we have 22,000, we have to get from somewhere to balance this for legal fees, or potential legal fees here, and that's the issue. And in this case, you happen to be a member of this council, and yes, you are a citizen here, but we have to defend the city in, in this issue, as we would if it was anybody else doing it here. It's just in your case, you happen to sit in this position also, so.
Well, what?
Excuse me, the budget has to be balanced, I really don't feel that, of the options that I have, decrease health to the employees, we're struggling there anyway. The money in reserve, the way I look at it is for situations like this, and hopefully we don't run into a lot of them. So, anybody other comments? Councilwoman Deenan, I'll give you one more opportunity on this matter.
Yeah, I just, I just can't believe this council, or this, or the city manager has presented this in such a manner. Again, I'm a citizen as well, and to present it as Deenan cost, and removing money from reserves to pay those costs is absolutely absurd.
Thank you.
So, I'm not done yet, I'm not done yet. Again, I will be at the workshop tomorrow evening, I understand Florida law, I understand code enforcement, I understand our code, and the reality was, when a decision was made to hire an outside attorney, it should have came back to the city council to approve the cost of that attorney. So it's the council's responsibility, not mine, because the costs were so high.
Thank you.
Just, and Cheryl, I'm just going to raise this question to you, I mean, we're, we're putting this, or it's being proposed to put this $22,000 in here, in anticipation of what's coming forward. Have you given any consideration at all to stop this process from moving forward?
No, in fact, I.
Well, I'm not, I'm not done, I just, I don't, I don't, I mean, from the, in the past, from what I have seen, and I've attended the meetings and that sort of thing, and it doesn't seem like it's going to go anywhere but just further in, more into the ground financially. And I just, my, my request from you would be, wouldn't you not consider putting an end to this, and let's just move forward, not have to go through this?
Mr. Breimer, I don't think, or Councilman Breimer, I don't think that's an issue. The fact is, I had a classic variance case that was denied by the Board of Adjustment. I went through the Burt Harris process to try to mediate the process, to save the money, to save the city money, and to avoid future court costs. So, you know, I'm not going to comment on that issue, but no, it's my property, I have a vested right in that property, and I think, I think it's absurd the way this has been, is being handled tonight regarding the budget.
Thank you. Hearing, any further comment? Hearing none, Lenora, on the, the motion.
Councilwoman Deenan?
No.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Deenan?
Yes, motion carries. Do you have any other direction there? Next here, could I please have a motion to set the two public hearings?
I'll make the motion to set the two public hearings for September 3rd, 2021.
I'll make the motion to set the two public hearings for September 3rd, 2014, and September 17th, 2014, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. Any discussion from council on those dates? Hearing none, open up for the public comment on it, since it is Agenda Item. Hearing none, bring it back to council. Lenora?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item 3, discuss, take action on setting proposed millage for FY14-15.
We set the millage for fiscal year 14-15 at 8.3206 mils.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Discussion from council. Hearing none, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 3. Hearing none, back to council, any discussion from council on this? Lenora?
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Dean?
Yes, motion carries. Courtney and staff, thank you very much for putting the budget together. I know I spent some time with Courtney today on it, and very easy to go through. Andy, great job, thank you, and department heads, thank you for supporting us, and I wish we could have done more for you this year, but we will move forward and continue to grow. So, thank you, staff, Courtney, appreciate it very much. Any further business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just would also like to thank the city manager and the staff, and once again, you did an excellent job. We're very much aware of the hard work that you do and the effort that you put into not only this, but all of the work that you do, and it's deeply appreciated, and I understand from the city manager that we're going to try again for the award for the budget, and so we're going to win. Thank you, all.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Any further business? Hearing none, remember we have the workshop tomorrow night. Okay? Thank you, we need adjourned.